Okay, good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, October 7, 2015. It is now 4:30 in the afternoon and we shall begin our council meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Ron Rensing.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Kent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
And first on the agenda is public comments. At this time, are there any public comments? Don, I'm... Before you begin, Don, I'd like to address a few things.
Marky.
I would like to address a few things with you first. We're welcome to have your public comments today. But I do want to point out, we have spoken about drainage over the phone.
Yep.
We have addressed your zoning issue via the letter from our attorney. And do you have new information that you would like to share with us, other than the conversations held with Scott or myself?
Well, for one thing...
Can you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
For one thing, concerning the drainage, how would we know where the water's gonna go after the building is up? Know what I'm saying? I think you're telling me that in that first 60 days, I had to appeal this whole works.
What building? Okay, one moment. I'm not sure what building you're talking about, but I also would like to remind you, because of our conversation at our last meeting and the length of time that you had, we are eliminating it to five minutes for this meeting.
This won't take very long. And I apologize for rushing the guys for running over. But I'm sorry about that. But this won't take long.
Remember, new, anything new?
I'm sorry, what?
New. If you have new comments.
Yes, it is new.
Okay.
Okay. The reason Marita and I are here today is because we cannot get on the council agenda to address the council members. Having talked to several members on various city committees, I was told, in order to get a response from the city council members, we had to get on the council agenda. Having tried twice to get on the agenda for September 16th and October 7th, we have had no success. We are now requested, for the third time, to be allowed on the agenda to finish our presentation to the council members. Therefore, we are asking for a letter from the city mayor confirming we are on the agenda for October 21st, 2015, or stating the reason why we are being denied our rights to address the council members. Thank you, Don and Marita Schultz.
Thank you, Don. Don, I would like to remind you that we have invited you to meet with Scott, myself, and another councilman, if you would like.
I can hear what?
We're gonna move forward. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I will support.
Thank you. If there are no comments, may I please have a roll call?
Gils.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Thank you. Number three is, into new business, consider a proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I believe Lisa Johnson, are you going to come up? And Barry? Barry will? Okay.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this afternoon on the proclamation recognizing October as National Disability Awareness, Employment Awareness Month. During this month-long celebration, we want to raise awareness about disability employment issues and celebrate the contributions of village residents in their employment careers. As most of you are aware, the mission of the village is about purpose, privacy, and dignity to the people that we serve. Providing individuals with the necessary skills and supports to obtain community employment is central to delivering on our mission. First of all, employment provides people with a purpose to get up in the morning and to showcase their various skills. Many of us are defined by our careers and our occupations, and people with disabilities share this same desire. Also, we cannot undermine the dignity that is brought to an individual when they have a job, increase their skill set, grow in their self-confidence, or become more financially independent. The dignity of earning a paycheck is no small accomplishment, and the independence it provides to control one's money enhances that individual sense of purpose and dignity. And we applaud the people we serve who have accomplished this milestone. Some statistics for you to share about Village Northwest and our efforts to recognize National Disability Employment Awareness Month. We currently have 40 individuals at the village who are competitively employed in our community. These individuals make more than minimum wage and are paid directly from the company that they work for. The village works with 45 different local businesses to provide employment opportunities. Twenty of these businesses employ individuals directly at their business. Seventeen of these individuals are employed through supported group employment, and ten of these businesses provide our individuals with contracted work at Northwest Enterprises and Futures Unlimited. Once an individual has been hired at a community business, the village has a certified job coach to train and support those individuals throughout the course of their employment. We currently have 16 job coaches that have been certified to provide these services. As you can tell by these numbers, the village has worked extremely hard to provide employment opportunities to individuals, and I would be remiss, at this point, if I did not publicly thank and acknowledge Leah Timmer, our Community Employment Specialist, who has been very instrumental in the growth of our partnerships and creating opportunities for those we serve. So Leah, thank you for the work that you have done in providing these individuals with purpose and privacy and dignity. Also, I want to thank the 45 businesses who we have partnered with, partnered with, the Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Department, the case managers at DHS, Seasons, and Plains Area Mental Health, our job coaches, and the families of those we serve. Together, we all come together to make it possible for individuals with a disability to be employed in our community. I hope that in these few minutes that we have been able to present to you this afternoon, that we have been able to enhance your awareness and your understanding about the employment of people with disabilities. And we want to thank the members of the city council and the mayor for your willingness to recognize and declare October as Disability Employment Awareness Month here in Sheldon. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Any questions for me?
No, but thank you for all that you do and all your employees and the staff and the residents. We truly appreciate having you here in Sheldon, and I think it's a... I just think it's wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we will need to make a motion then to consider the proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Greg.
I'll support that.
Thank you. And may I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. Number four on our agenda, considering the request from the Sheldon Community Schools, we have not received any official requests, so no action will be taken at this time on number four. With that said, we'll move on to number five. We'll have an update from Jacob Kerr on parks and rec. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for letting me do this annual report each year. As you guys have your packets in front of you, you can't... We'll start off with our Sheldon Aquatic revenue that we had for this year. As you can see, comparing to last year, we had much higher revenue and memberships and so on. And what that, I believe, contributes to is obviously the warmer weather that we had compared to last summer, which, as you can tell by the dates that we had closed, was 14, and then this year was 6. And out of those six, four of them were the beginning of the year for May, when we first started opening the pool. So technically, from June 1st to the end of August, or mid-August, we only had two days that we missed.
Wow, awesome.
So it's great having great weather. And then going on the recreation side, you can see our total registration for each program that we offer. The only one that isn't on there right now is our basketball, first through sixth grade, which is... which registration is going on right now. So that is the only one that is not currently on there. And then one other fix that we had from this year, everything has been the same since last year, except for summer recreation, we added third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball instead of third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade youth flag football, due to numbers and trying... Since Northwest Iowa is known for its basketball, we thought that would be a great idea adding that, so... And then, just going on, another recreation activity that was new this year is, it was an event, it was a free event. We did a pitch-hit-and-run event for... Which is a baseball, it's kind of like kick, punt, and pass. And with that, it was a... It's a free event that we did Friday, June 12th, at the Sheldon's Complex, not the new one, but the City Fields. And we had each winners for third and fourth grade in a girls'-and-a-boys division, as well as fifth and sixth grade in a boys'-and-girls division. And I would like to thank the Sheldon Mills Sun for letting us use them, as in, they were gracious enough to have the first-place winners in each division in the paper. So I want to thank them for that.
Nice.
But other than that, those are the new reports and recreation programs that have been added for this year. Is there any questions at all?
The totals for the adult programs, are those teams or individuals?
Those are teams, yes. And looking at basketball and indoor soccer, those are technically the highest that we can go when it comes to scheduling teams. So we couldn't go any farther, which is not fun, but it was the highest that we can go, yep.
Okay. Any questions for Jake? Thank you for the report, good job. Next on our agenda, number six, we will consider the water main easement in the Runger Edition project. And this is for the SCDC, the one that crosses the road. Do you have any questions regarding the water main easement?
Just an observation, I drove out there today, and it seems like... It's here taking a long time.
Yeah, they're... Todd, do you want to give an update? He was gonna give an update later, so maybe you can give it now.
No, yep.
Where they're at, that's fine.
I thought it'd be appropriate to hear the excuse this time. Go ahead.
Obviously, there's an excuse, so no comment. I'll just tell you where they're at. They were tiling today. Hopefully, they can put in the sub-base for the road tomorrow and Friday. And at this point, they're scheduling to pave next week. Get a pave next week, then they'll be down to just a few minor details back.
There was quite a bit of utility work with this project as well, by looping the water main in that, which ties into this water main easement here, and some storm sewer work and looping some of our lines. So outside of what was where the actual new street's gonna go, so it did entail a little more work than...
I can give you the contractor's line of excuses if you really want to, Ron.
I've heard it well before.
Yep. No, thank you.
Close rain we've seen in 50 years.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, please.
I'll support.
Thank you. If there's no further questions or comments, may I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Thank you. And then number seven is considering the storm sewer easement in the Runger Edition. And this is O'Brian County implement, and you do see on your paperwork that we have all their signatures.
There was just a small corner of their property that kind of tied in by the driveway there, that we had to cut across their property to one of those retention ponds. So it's kind of improvement for drainage off our street, as well as helped out with O'Brian County, so they were certainly receptive to it.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Okay, and now number eight, reviewing our operational marketing study for the events. And we have a nice color packet right before you. Scott, if you want to lead us on...
Yeah, I can certainly... How much information you want to go through. Hopefully, you've all had kind of a chance to review through a lot of the information. I won't spend much time going through all the information on especially the first number of pages. Basically, the first, you know, 23, 24 pages gets into a lot of information in regards to kind of their analysis and the actual market review, trying to gather as much information on what's the primary market area and what's their secondary market area. And as part of that process, you know, they analyze the population, number of households, families, average household size, median age, median, you know, income levels, and then, of course, they do all the pretty graphs and charts that go along with that as well. Basically, what they're trying to do is gather as much information as possible from what's the draw gonna be for this event center, as far as events, whether it's wedding receptions, conventions, business community, or whatever, being a draw to use this facility. So that kind of helps them determine kind of the saturation market. As part of that, we also help them in putting together, Kurt and I spent a lot of time gathering information from various other event centers in the area, you know, over to Hartley, even the Spencer area, to the Sioux Center, Orange City's Hall, try to get as much information as possible as far as what was available for other facilities that could be utilized for similar-type events, or just a draw for different crowds. I also spent some extensive time looking at the facilities here in Sheldon, obviously the Community Building, the Lifelong Learning and Rec Center, some of the other venues, of course, the golf course, the Eagles Club, a number of churches have, you know, reception fellowship halls that they utilize for different events. We tried to capture as much information as possible to make sure we're looking at the entire market, so we had a good grasp on kind of where we're at. Moving from there into the last part of the report, which starts on page 24, which is the actual operations analysis, that first page on page 24 is kind of where he builds in a number of kind of some of the assumptions, when the year of operations is gonna start, operational budget expenses and revenues, comparing to, you know, various centers that we talked about, location of the site, size of the facility, rental space, what our rent rates are gonna be on the facility, all those various type items that basically, he wants to make sure you get a clear picture of what's included in this facility as far as the operations and building in those assumptions. So if there's something on here that isn't similar to the way you were thinking of how it was gonna be operated, that certainly would change and dictate on some of the numbers. Then once you get into page 25 and further, basically, the way he developed this analysis was based on a full-city-operated facility. We did have extensive conversations, as we have talked before, on the two concepts, whether it's 100% city-operated, or we would consider some type of request for proposal, some type of agreement with an operating firm or other company that also may express interest in it. The two facilities, he... We spent a lot more time looking at and comparing to, of course, were the Sioux Center and the Orange City Event Centers, and they actually each do it separately. Orange City is a city-operated facility, it's a city staff person, the budget is fully operated by the city. Sioux Center actually outsources all their services. It's a city-owned facility, but then they lease it actually to an operating company that operates the facility, and then they actually give them seed money as part of their operating budget, and then they have a separate committee that sits down on a quarterly basis and reviews where they're at as far as operations on the facility. So also on page 29, the bottom of 29, he makes some comments in reference to the contract operation, if we were to go that route, what that would entail. Anyway, back to 25, there it kind of encompasses the personnel and staff, that based on his assumptions, the number of events, hiring one full-time person, the commodities, which includes a number of items from office supplies, maintenance, janitor supplies, event supplies, et cetera, basically kind of helps put together then some of the contractual items, electric and gas, water, sewer, insurance, telephone, renting equipment, other contract services, which is noted on the bottom of the page, gets into, you know, window washing, carpet cleaning, mechanical systems, control systems, alarms, all those type items are broken into that number, which is a larger number, trash pickup, any type training dues, then they owe a minor item for replacement fund, then basically totaling all those categories together comes to the total expense of approximately $295,000. And then there, the further pages, 27 and so on, kind of gives a more in-depth breakdown of the number of hours for the position, salaries of the position, based on comparable wages for Northwest Iowa. Page 28 is where it gets into the revenues, as a breakdown on the rental fees, the beverage as far as various beverages, alcohol services, banquet charges for the facility, and basically all the revenue sources, which totals about $190,000. Then Division III, of course, breaks down the two items, expenses versus revenues, anticipated difference, a loss of approximately $103,000. And the last couple of pages is Division IV is where he kind of breaks out kind of some of the fees that he charges, the number of events, potential events, number of users, try to get a grasp on, you know, how many events, what size of events, et cetera, would be held at this facility, based on our square footage, the meeting space, et cetera. And then the rent charges, of course, on page 31. So there's a quick review of the 31 pages of the operational study, but certainly open to any questions that you might have, or any additional thoughts that you had in your
Well, I thought this is the information that we needed and requested, so that we could go further and possibly going out and getting some RFPs, because we didn't know what it would take to run it, if we were to run it, but now it gives us an assumption. I would suggest that we now use this information and go out there and get some request for proposals to see what it would take, if there's other parties interested.
I'm curious, Scott, with what we pay to maintain this facility, the other facilities around town, do you feel they've got it pretty well covered in terms of expenses? I mean, there's always some assumptions here, but...
Yeah, and I did talk to Ken extensively, or whatever, the day he was here, Kurt and I, you know, met with him for, you know, basically a day and a half. And then I talked to him on the phone a few different times, and he shares, he airs on the side of conservative. He says, you know, there's items based on the other facilities, the type events that, you know, they're currently hosting. I mean, he got a copy of their entire schedule for the next two years of their type of events, you know, that they're holding, and what our draw would be, and tries to put a, you know, a realistic approach on there. You know, expenses, we talked about different items, as far as, you know, what would the city cover, you know? At one time, we even had some numbers built in there for, you know, pushing snow on the access road, cleaning the parking lot, you know? We built in assumptions that, you know, that's still part of the road, we would clean that road, mowing and maintenance of the outdoor stuff, you know, is that part of the park grounds? You know, there's a lot of assumptions there, too, as far as some of those expenses. So we tried to err of being, I'd say, probably more conservative, if anything, because, you know, like Mike Bell said the day he was here, he wants to err on the side of that probably quicker than the other way, because he needs to stay in business, too. So he doesn't want to over-project. You know, the other things he didn't touch on is, you know, the draw above and beyond what your regular draw would be. You know, is there something of going to another market to draw between that Minneapolis and Omaha for, you know, music, you know, a variety of things or whatever that we're unaware of? Well, we didn't build any of that in, because you just don't know. Those are the assumptions that you... I mean, you can plug in another $20,000, $25,000 and make those numbers up, but that wouldn't be right either if you don't know what's gonna happen, so...
Going through it, it seems to me to be a thorough report. I think it's good information to have. The one question I had, too, that I was going through it, in terms of facilities, the closest thing I could think of that we operate would be the pool. Do you know approximately what kind of revenue versus expense? Where do we operate? Where are we at in the red or in the black on the pool?
Great call today, so I actually did kind of look at that, and based on some of the numbers, you know, Jake provides in some of our revenue stuff, I'm guesstimating we're right in the... At the $40,000 to $50,000 per year is what we subsidize it, expenses over revenues.
Open for four months.
Correct.
Roughly.
Yep.
So, I mean, that kind of gives me, and then, you know, something to reference to, it's not just the fact that it runs in the red is not necessarily a reason not to do it.
If our expenses are the same as last year on the pool, based on the revenue we generated, we'd be right at probably $45,000.
Of a loss.
Of a loss.
Right. Any other comments, questions?
One of the things in the report reading concerning is, he tips on the aging population, and how we're gonna age in our population, people are getting older, and we're not retaining the younger generation. I mean, it's something for us to work on, is, you know, along with, he's talking about, you know, our median income for this area, for the study area that he did, is lower than the other areas around us. Not that we can hardly do anything, but that's concerning.
One thing to keep in mind is a lot of the statistical data they take from O'Brian County versus Sioux County.
Correct.
And that's actually a huge difference. Sioux County's numbers versus O'Brian County, I mean, losing population, median income levels and stuff are a lot lower than Sioux County. Anyway, so us sitting right on that borderline, like with population growth, you know, we're going up, the county's going backwards with population, now whether that trend continues is, of course, to be seen, based on those, so...
You know, one of the things, too, when we talk about aging population and elder workforce and stuff like that, some of the things we need to think about as communities, how do we draw those people back? Amenities such as aquatic centers, such as the proposed event center, the Brandy Sports Complex, which we just received an All-Star Community Award on, and those are all very important amenities for us as a community and quality of life to consider as we go forward, if we really wanted to think about bringing those younger people back to a community of our size. So I just wanted to input that information to you guys to chew on as you consider it as well.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments? Ron, Brad?
He says, he makes a statement, or you made the statement, that he's conservative on his estimates. Frankly, I don't... I think he might be tad bit conservative on his income, but I don't know how conservative he is on his expenses. I think he's low. And that's just my perception of what it's gonna actually cost, especially if the city runs it. I don't think our staffing costs... I think he used a 35% factor in there for soft costs on a full-time employee, or manager, or whatever. Our soft costs are a lot more than that. That's just a fact of life. Our health insurance alone is more than 35%, and we provide our employees 100% of their family health insurance. So I think, I think his estimates on expenses are low. Here again, it's something we needed because of the fact that, to go for the grant, to use it as a resource, when and if... I think it would be premature, Tricia, to actually go out and try and get requests for proposals, and the only reason I say that is we don't even know if we're gonna build it or not yet.
I know.
So I think, you know...
Go ahead.
Well, I just, I think that it's... I agree with you, that it's something that needs to be done, but I think we need to move a little farther down the line before we'd actually go out and get some RFPs. I think as a council, we're gonna have to decide if, number one, if we do want to run it ourselves, and I don't think that's a decision that can be made tonight. I think that's gonna take some time, some discussion and whatnot. I think we ought to continue to try and get the grant. Frankly, that's gonna be a driving force in where this... a driving force in where this goes. I think it would be, it's foolish for us not to go after that Vision Iowa grant and do whatever we can to see if we can get it. That doesn't mean that we're going to build it. That's why Randy, frankly, I was disappointed in your vote the other, last time, because we never said we were going to build it, all we said was, let's see if we can get about 25% of the money to try and build it.
Right.
You know, so I think we ought to go after the Vision Iowa grant and, and continue forward and see what happens. That's all I got to say.
Great. And my reasoning for throwing it out there to try to get some RFPs is that may soften the blow of us running in the red, you know, there might be businesses out there that can lessen the costs of whether it's staff or cleaning or whatever some of the costs would be, you know, that might reduce it a little bit, so. Yes, Greg?
The facility in Orange City is owned by the city, do they employ a full-time manager for that?
They do, actually, a lot, a lot of his pro forma numbers that he put together was more based on, on Orange City's, and actually our expenses are quite a bit higher than theirs, based on the facility and size and some of those items, and depending on, they actually contract a lot of their services with the hospital, that's where they're able, because it's a municipal hospital, are able to save a lot of maintenance costs and some of those costs that way, so that's where they reduce some of them. But yeah, it's, it's one full-time person than a handful of part-time people that they hire based on certain events, but one full-time manager.
And I do agree, Ron, going after the grant. If there's free money out there to be had, why not? Why would we sit and why would we wait? Because it may not be there in the future. If it's there and available now, I think it would be in our best interest to go for it, especially when we get to that next item on our agenda and share the information with you where we stand now, with the contributions that are... Excuse us for a moment, while we enjoy the music, sorry Greg. Anyway, with the, with the amount that's already being, I don't want to say dedicated or promised, we'll get to that in a little bit, but we're looking for direction, you know, we have this information now, Ron, you've given direction, we should proceed now with the Vision Grant, is there any other comments on how or where you want to see us proceed? Do we go to final phase, or do we wait on the grant information? Any other comments that you'd like to share?
I think we've got to go after the grants.
Grant, thank you.
I think that's going to be the big piece of the puzzle.
I emailed the program manager today, just one prior to this meeting, plus we're kind of in the process of putting the grant application together and hope to deliver it next week, said, hey, just kind of getting my hands wrapped around timeframe, again, it's been a couple of years since I've been in a meeting, she estimates at minimum it'd probably be about, probably four months, as far as response, just want to make you aware of that, four months as far as the timeframe, says basically the way it would go, you submit your application, there's two staff people that review, review the applications, make sure they meet all the criteria or anything that's missing, they then submit it to a scoring committee, which they, they select a, a group off of, off of the, the CAT Committee that reviews it, and then they actually score the applications. Before they do that, they would probably allow us, which I'm thinking timeframe here, probably either in November, December, we, we would actually go before them and make an actual presentation, as long as we've met all the criteria, then they would actually score the application, which at minimum is another month, so you're probably talking just three months to go through the review, presentation, scoring process, if all the ducks are in a row and we meet all the criteria and it scores high enough, probably in month four is where they would be the first time where they would consider awarding some type of funding, so. I'm glad she shared that with me today, so I had a better idea of kind of the steps, and I wanted to make you aware of that as well, on, on kind of that, that timeframe, so.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, council, that information-wise, period of time here, that you want us together or look into at this point, or anything else we should be working on?
The grant.
Grant.
That's my...
Hopefully we got that put together, because that's, it's going to be a big baby.
Isn't it about the stack of the papers is probably good?
I'm guessing it's going to be close to about 100 pages.
Oh wow, it's a long process. Well, with that, and since we're, you know, talking about this, I'd like to move into number nine, considering the updated resolution of support for the, on the Vision Iowa CAT Grant. To date, we are at $213,250 pledged, and I'd like to remind you that this is not us going out and seeking funds and actively fundraising to get people on board, this is happening without us actively pursuing it, which is awesome. It's a great response, within the three weeks from our last council meeting, we had pledged around $60,000, correct?
Correct.
So in three weeks, this is how much more has come, and we really haven't pursued the fundraising options that we've talked about. And I think that makes a major impact on this application that we can and we should submit, so if you want to further on that.
Yeah, just the reason that we brought it back and put it on the agenda again is to, to update, so we have the most up-to-date resolution that we submit, because that goes in our packets, because the, the pledge component of the application is, is very important, Vision Iowa and the CAT Committee does review that, that's, that's an automatic requirement. They don't tell you a certain percentage that you have to raise, but there needs to be some type of pledge or community support. So, basically where we're at, based on the $5.3 million project, requesting $1,325,000 in the form of a grant, and with the pledges, as the mayor mentioned, $213,250, our local match contribution at this point is, is part of our grant application would be $3,761,750. So that's the, the resolution of support we're looking for today, so we can change that resolution.
Okay. Do you have any comments? Greg, I see you pondering questions.
No, I'm just, again, thinking about the pool, wasn't the pool around that too?
Um, our pool, it was like about 3.1, I think is, and then actually when the bid came in, it was, it was under three, it was 2.9 is where our total project was at.
Okay.
Comments or questions, council on my left? Then, I'd like to ask, do we have a motion to consider the updated resolution of support on the Vision Iowa CAT Grant?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Last request for comment?
Is that 3.7, is it up to 3.7, or is it 3.7? I mean...
Yeah, basically in the process, let's say over the course of the next four months, this happens all the time or whatever, let's say there's more pledges or donations or anything that comes forward to it, we can always update our financial information to the Vision Iowa folks, so if that number, you know, say we get another X amount of dollars or whatever, that would reduce down our, our match as part of the application, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, are, we're guaranteeing 3.7 right now?
Just as part of the, the grant application.
This is part, we're not guaranteeing anything else.
No.
No.
And this does not mean we're building it, this is just to go after grant money that's available.
We're not moving to final design on the project or nothing, nothing moves forward till that. I've seen projects, like I mentioned earlier, the legislative body has approved, you know, $5 million, there's an additional $2 million that are on top of that, so they have $7 million in their kitty right now. The $2 million is from projects as carryover funds, because projects didn't happen, they didn't move forward, weren't awarded the funds, so that's, let's say our, let's say they award us $1.3 million, and we don't proceed with our project, that 1.3 goes in the pot, so that's, so to...
For the next year.
To share an example, basically, there's projects out there that didn't proceed, even if they were awarded the grant, they didn't accept them, so that's why they have carryover funds. So, once we even get the grant, there's, that will all come back to the council, that will be a call the council would have to make of whether you want to accept it, still for us to proceed on the project. It's just in our financial performance, we have to put, and right now that's our gap of where we're at, if it's not 3.7, and we put a different number in there, they're going to ask me, where, where are you filling the gap? My answer right now would be, I don't know. So that's, that's, that's why we have to use that as our local match.
Okay.
So, and since our last meeting, we had 60-odd thousand committed, now we've got 212,000?
213,000.
213,000, 215,000.
Yes.
You know, in two weeks, we could have another, I mean, it could change.
Well, just one thing to share, I mean, we're, we went out and solicited letters of support and whatnot for the project, we are, we are not, I mean, there could be more that come in, but we are not actually going to additional businesses unless the council wants us to do it and continue either a fundraising campaign or whatnot, we have not to this point. We're basically, for our application standpoint, we feel we're comfortable with the number of letters we have, the pledges and the support to submit our application. Now, if the council wants to give direction to do a full fundraising campaign, I, I think we'd want to talk about that, because, you know, one of the items we talked about early on is, you know, naming of certain rooms and whatnot, I think we'd want to establish some type of criteria on, on how that fundraising campaign would work. But as of right now, Kurt and I are not going out soliciting any more donations, now they certainly can still come in, and we're more than welcome to take them.
Absolutely.
But we're, we're not actively doing that role.
Would that tip to skills any further in terms of the grant? I mean, if we come in with 300,000?
They don't tell you, knowing from experience, there's, there's no magic number to the percentage, but the, the more community support helps. So, whether the number's 213 or 350,000, they're not going to give me an answer that that flipped us over the edge, but it certainly doesn't hurt.
Right. But we do have to remember there's an October 15 deadline.
Right. But as, you know, like Randy mentioned, we can, you know, if, if we got, next week, Wednesday, and I dropped off the application, and we had another donor for $25,000 or whatever, I call them the following week and I update my information. That, that happens all the time, I, I've seen that on numerous applications and, and projects, so, that's pretty common practice, actually.
Any other comments?
Nope.
Any other comments, questions?
Just clarification, the, the county has given us a statement of support already and has given us some money.
If the 13,250 is from the county, yep, we got their letter, their minutes and their some financial support.
Wonderful, that's nice. Okay, then if there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to take a roll call, please. Rensink?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Kent?
I'm sorry, Keels.
Aye.
You can go twice.
Just go twice. Yes, again, okay. Thank you very much. Number 10 on our agenda is considering the proposal for a goal-setting session, again, we would like to have Jeff Schott come back, we've worked with him in the past on a number of occasions, it would be approximately $1,500 cost to the city to have him come up, and we are thinking about December 8th as our tentative date, either at 7:00 in the morning or 11:30, we can hammer that out later, but do we have a motion to approve this proposal for a goal-setting session?
I would like to make that motion.
Thanks, Ron. Do we have a second?
Since I probably won't be there.
Still in December.
Where are you going?
Support.
All right, thank you. Any questions? If not, roll call, please. Funker?
Aye.
Keels?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Rensink?
Aye.
Awesome, and last on our, yes.
I was just going to say, if you can, please check and confirm, we do have that December 8th down, the reason being is he's going to be in Northwest Iowa for another one, so it's, it's kind of a cost-saving trip, we can share costs with other communities with mileage, since he comes from Marion, Iowa. So if, if that date works or whatever, doesn't work, let me know ASAP, so, because his, his schedule's starting to get pretty full.
What day do we get?
December 8th.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
It works.
Last time what we did is SCDC did it in the morning at 7:00, and we actually did it, I think, from like 11:00 to 1:00 o'clock, so we do like a working lunch from 11:00 to 1:00.
Did you win on that, Randy?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was actually February, just about two years ago.
That's when we put the dot on the wall.
Right, yep, okay, and we took the motion, and then next, comments, any comments, Todd? Lyle?
Yes, as you, many of you have probably seen, we've got our new police vehicle here, so we have a 2009 Ford Crown Vic that has got about 100,000 miles on, I guess I'd just like council permission or consensus to liquidate it.
Liquidate the car. What's that? Hunter, okay.
Some kids coming up.
I got you a good idea.
Absolutely. I think you have the general consensus, go ahead and liquidate that. Any other comments, council? Anything? Scott?
I have nothing else.
Do you want to share? Yes, Kurt?
Real quick, this is an update from our last council meeting, when I presented on Homebase Iowa, we have set, as a nation ceremony date for Tuesday, October 27, we're planning on hosting that out at the Veterans Memorial Park here in City Park, Governor Branstad is confirmed, he will be attending, I'd like to extend an invite to everybody here, as well as the general public to come out and attend that, we have ordered signage, that's in, we should hopefully have that in place by the time the ceremony's hosted, so, this is an update of where we're at, and if anybody's interested, Congressman Steve King will be in town on Monday at our Kiwanis Group downstairs in the basement for Kiwanis.
Thank you. And now, Scott.
And just to pass it on to the mayor and city council, this is the award we received at the Iowa League of Cities Conference in Cedar Rapids, about a week and a half ago, so anyway, this is, to all of you, we will display it down in the office, so.
Good work, thank you. And on that, I have no comments, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Thank you, roll call, please. Rensink?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Keels?